Okay, where we have the animal control. That approved. Yeah, I know you took ten off.
You're taking out the truck that we were saying?
Well, you know, we still might give him something used for a lot less than much. We still don't know what space he's doing with the vehicle for sure.
Well, we're leaving that alone. I think that's the consensus somewhat correct.
So the twenty-five and then maybe the other things on there, the vehicle maintenance and all the other.
Well, you don't need vehicle maintenance, right? Leave mileage.
I tell you what, my suggestion is to cut the truck fifteen thousand and leave the vehicle maintenance stuff in there. The way you at least buy some sort of.
Well, I think the consensus was, and I'm wrong, that was, that was, we didn't feel that there was a need at this time of what we're having to pay.
That's fine, but we're going to start paying mileage to them.
That's what we're, we already.
Right, and mileage is in there.
Yes.
Very seldom we pay mileage.
Thousand dollars right here.
Keep that up. That'd be a good way to mark the distance, the difference, pay the mileage one year for what is around town and everything.
And you would know when it's, so that mileage just comes off, is what you're saying?
Leave mileage, take the vehicle, leave it's all.
Oh, okay, okay, alright. Okay. And did we, did you, because we took ten out of the animal control, that that was for their truck?
No. I took that out because I thought, you know, they bought a truck this year. But it may be that we use this year's stamp.
I don't want animal control.
Because see, I've got, the money's I've got in there, I'm sure is more than enough for.
For next year.
For budget for this year plus the truck.
Yeah, except as of right now, county council's cut it out, but they're going to come back and.
Address it.
At the October meeting and ask. But we're working with some local dealerships to see if we can't get him something comparable to what he's got right now and just make a.
And I'm not sure.
Ford drive transition versus. I couldn't get on that.
As soon as I know, I can, I can, I'll cut more.
Should we, should it be either or though?
You got what?
We have on the city, we have gasoline and mileage.
Yeah, it should be either or. So we can take out gasoline or we can take out the mileage.
I think gasoline.
Take the gasoline.
Take out the gas.
Yeah, take out the gasoline.
Oh, that was it, there was going to be a city. It better increase the mileage.
Pardon?
It better increase the mileage.
Well, the senator suggested we're going to see what happens with this year, then you'll be able to test.
Around town, you said.
Well, there was three days last week to travel to wherever the continuing education was for licensure. I mean, healthy drive three days and drive seventy-five mile a day around, or one way, that's four hundred fifty miles, three days. But that's going to take pretty much the mileage in.
He wants to get in dump air day.
I don't know.
Yeah, things in.
Purdue's, Purdue's a hundred point five mileage required to go road school two times.
Well, we'll just have to see what happens with it.
Is it part of his contract?
He has to go to school to maintain his license.
I know that, I'm just saying, were we paying mileage as part of his contract?
That's common when we use everybody.
Or a lot of city use.
I'm just trying to figure what all's in his contract.
He has a contract now, it looks like everyone else does.
No, so I mean, just a thought, if we know they're going to go to the school, it's going to be that far away, I mean, can't we borrow a vehicle from one of the other departments?
I try not to do that, I try not to even let the police department use the old course, because it's most utilities and they use it there.
But I mean, those would be extreme situations, it wouldn't be every day, it would be something, you know, instead of paying some mileage to go a hundred and forty miles one way and a hundred and forty miles back or whatever it is, you know, maybe make an exception for those longer trips.
Well, I'm saying how Gary could use the utility, the car, if he's working on utility business.
Yeah.
You know, me around town or whatever, but.
Okay, um, and the board of works. Well, if we didn't figure yet, we'll talk about that.
Why are we actually still, we spent twenty-five thousand a year for custodian.
Two custodians, three.
Well, three now.
What do we do?
Wait, and the last one?
She gave us a schedule, she worked. Let's say twenty-five hours a week, twenty-three, two hundred fifty bucks, fifty. That's thirteen thousand to fifteen thousand a year for labor. It could not be more, so a lot of things we haven't done, because we haven't done windows outside, making them like inside in. Just windows we've gone through.
It needs to be.
Waiting up for the dentists.
I was just asking where we were at, I'm not saying we had to cut it, I would just say what it was.
If you cut it, I would, I would cut it very, very little.
We had twenty-five thousand in this year, um, well, let me, let me tell you now. Um, there's seventeen thousand left in there, however, since we took the assistant planning director over, there will be a resolution to move money out of that line item and it's probably going to be seven or eight thousand dollars. Because at the beginning, your utilities were paying to half.
Correct, so we didn't have. Like the budget's over, move money's from there to the rest of first salary.
We do for next year, it's just like, I need to move money by resolution, and that'll probably be the October.
I would cut it to three, four thousand.
I think you just figured out thirteen to fifteen thousand.
Yep, that's without doing things like the gym floor, that's about.
So we have, we have twenty in there, it's getting up to five.
Oh, yeah.
Custodian board of works.
No, I mean.
Then we'll fit the gym.
Maybe the order is.
I didn't wish to figure that out.
We need to go through it all first. Getting back to that.
Yeah. Um, I took ten. They're done just usually around about a hundred and something in them.
Animal control?
For the whole thing.
It has increased over the last few years, but.
And then right around about a hundred or so?
Yeah, that's probably close, so it would be a fifty.
I would say. No, 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 fifteen.
Fifteen for sure, if you take the truck out, or seventy-five hundred.
But if they tack on the insurance and all that, then it takes it up.
Okay, so if we take five out of there.
Take five out.
Okay, just take five more out.
Wait a minute, hold on, if it's around a hundred, let's say it's a hundred and twenty, say it's a hundred and twenty, that's sixty thousand, let's say if they get a truck for ten thousand or less, that's five.
No, 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 they're talking, no, no, they're talking in terms maybe this year.
This year.
Right.
And I've got it in here.
That's what I'm saying, let's say.
It seems like what you cut a hundred and twenty.
So that's sixty for our portion, right, and they buy a truck this year, let's say it's ten thousand, that's five thousand's our portion, that's sixty-five, that's a ten or is it a?
No.
No, 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 you're not.
They're, no, no, they're, if they're talking a hundred and twenty, they're talking next year, they're not, they, they've already cut the truck out of it.
Fifty bucks or a hundred on a thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so.
But I'm saying, we've got seventy-five in there.
No, 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 we've got sixty-five.
That was cut out of next year, that's two thousand twelve request cut out.
We've cut out, and here's what we're down to.
Yeah, that's for next, right, what I was talking about was this seventy-five, in two thousand eleven, but not for two thousand twelve.
We'll, we'll probably be able to take some out of the two thousand eleven.
I think you should cut the five thousand out of cats and dogs.
No, no, that's, that's what I'm thinking, that's seventy-five there.
Okay, we've got five out of there.
No, no, we're not saying, oh, hold on, I'm not satisfied, we're not moving on, we're on a hold, we're a hold, hold back, I'm trying to understand.
What's he going to do, he wants to cut some out of this year's.
And move for next year.
He still wants to cut some out of this year.
How much is left this year?
Right now, it's sixty-five.
Seventy.
Oh, this year.
We haven't paid anything else, we haven't paid anything, our half of the budget, I don't pay until the end.
If you don't buy a truck?
If you don't buy a truck, it'll be fifteen off the top, off, well, seventy-five hundred if you count your half.
I think probably, I'm guessing that we might be able to take.
I know.
I'm going to say maybe ten thousand off this year, do you know what their budget is this year?
Not right offhand, I got about.
That's if we don't do the truck.
Fifty budgets, I don't want to have any.
Last year, the end of the year.
I can tell you again, share your words then.
I paid him around fifty some thousand, I think it was.
So if we took out ten thousand, that still gives us sixty thousand to pay him, plus five thousand for a truck. But we don't know yet, so she gets the figures in.
And that'd be the end of the center, that's a different place.
But if, let's, if we paid him like around fifty thousand, a ten percent increase, fifty-five, you know, is it going to go up twenty percent? I don't think it's going to go up twenty percent a year. I, I didn't.
I'd say it'd go up in sixty-five.
The council didn't increase the twenty percent if that's what you're asking, I would say they cut it back to whatever it was this year.
See, I don't know what, what that is.
Except for raises, I'm sure it was cut back to what it was for eleven, they haven't, we didn't hardly do any increases in line items, budget line items.
I would say we probably take.
With the five hundred dollar salary increase.
They're giving about a five dollar increase on budget.
There'd be, your, your increase for salary would be like five hundred dollars because it's two positions of five hundred.
They give you the total fifteen for this kind.
Maybe sixty-five thousand per twenty-eleven.
Even if you went in half on the truck this year, it'd only be about seven thousand.
And they cut that down to sixty thousand.
So they cut that one down?
Yeah. So we're, so we're at sixty thousand with.
Poor puppies and kitties.
Five thousand out of ten.
Yeah, poor puppies and kitties, guys, that's the upside.
Children's, we're running out of.
And making the sixty-five thousand, you hush up about my kids.
Five thousand out of the six.
Two thousand eleven, that's.
You said one more house on that place.
You get trucks. No, you got two dogs, they don't mind my pets.
We can go up to resolution, so.
Well, no.
It's going to be fifteen thousand.
I don't get that, we're all ready for that, okay?
So this, this will be sixty-five for the two thousand eleven. So we've got fifteen thousand.
Let's hit board of works.
Oh, okay.
We can't imagine anything else.
Okay, we're, any star of board works, right?
Can't do that after you told me. Well, you know, they're already six percent.
They're going to, yeah.
I just got the letter.
Where are we at with utilities so far?
I just got the letter, Bill, we're here.
Money over two thousand.
Three fifty-three.
And the police department's over two thousand.
We have fifty-nine percent.
Just like your ass.
Air conditioner.
Yeah, fifty-nine percent of that.
But that, I think, is the, that would be not be paying, well, that would be paying August bill because that would be paid in September. Fifty-nine percent. You told me tell us. So we get last year.
So that's going to be through July, you're saying, yes. So I mean, we're going to have a little extra basically probably this year, maybe, but if we're anticipating any increase next year.
Last year, we had. I just tend to go a little heavy.
Yeah.
Thirteen fifty thousand, last year, we had twenty-five thousand. She makes a lot of money. This is medicine, eight thirty-one.
That's only for July.
This year was only twenty-five thousand, you know.
You know, yeah, so I don't think we can do anything with it. All right, to the police.
I'm just going to pay somebody to go across from here, right?
Yes, I believe.
Overtime, have we cut down on overtime or does it still happen? Can that be reduced at all now?
Um, Stacy.
Scott.
Right now, I know we probably work the last overtime because we're two policemen short, but when we were at the twenty policeman, how much is overtime being, been reduced? So over time, two thousand.
Well, I believe we've got some of the records for Sarah, because that's in her old jukebox.
Twenty-two thousand five seventy-seven.
Well, that's for this year, huh? Right, it's two thousand.
Two thousand twelve.
Oh, it should be part-time for all of next year.
Because we're looking at this scenario.
Yeah.
So take that number twenty-two five, or which line are you talking about?
Right, you click.
Twenty-two five.
So it should be part-time all next year, so part-time?
Well, you know, Stacy, you did state your case here on that, you get by with a thirty-five hour a week person, part-time for a year.
Problem, we just probably need to do a new job description because right now it's overtime, so we'll need to amend that to part-time.
That's a different.
Twenty-two five.
Twenty thousand five.
Well, hold on, that, that's a, that's a total savings of, he's looking at insurance, taxes, all the benefits, everything. Even if you took it straight thirty-five hours a week, no, you know, overtime or anything, it would be eighteen-two. So even if you took it back to twenty, and that would give her a little bit of leeway.
So.
It's eleven sixty-five.
The record's clear. We're taking it back to twenty, twenty even?
Here's another question I had, Stacy, we currently only have one crossing guard, correct?
Right.
And that's how much a year?
Twenty-three dollars a day, thirty-five hundred a year.
Is it that much?
Yeah, twenty thousand.
Who's school days they have here?
Yeah, yes, they have to have a way.
Yeah, it's thirty-six hundred.
What I'm saying.
What do they cross the street with?
Last year, only a five dollars left over there.
In what?
At one. And five hundred dollars left.
Hundred eighty days times twenty, that's three hundred dollars.
There's no crossing guard in Lincoln. She says the elementary.
There's another used to.
You got half week, yes. There's a hundred eighty days, they have.
But we're, we're not sure where the crossing guard is. The elementary school, where are they parked?
What exactly?
They're directing traffic. Set the cones out, directing traffic, that's what we. I said, I don't really know why we're paying this.
It looks like nothing we can do.
Yeah. We've been up for years, you said pay one St. Mary's too, but we don't do that anymore.
Well, we used to have, what, three?
Three, four.
And they was, they helped the children across the streets, down there, across to go to St. Mary's and down there across.
Like Junior High, yeah, Lincoln, they used to be one.
But now they take every kid up and down on a bus.
But.
Because there's a walk nowhere. If that's, if that's a private driver, like Mark said, we shouldn't have to pay for a crossing.
My understanding, there's some kind of agreement in there something between, with the. Well, I believe there's anything.
That wasn't anything when Bruce changed over, I thought there was some, something in there that, I don't, don't hope it to.
And they utilize him?
Yeah.
I mean, that's, we're paying extra, we're paying for that.
Oh, I, this is all we.
That's like a big deficit.
Well, I, just a thought, rather than cut it all, we could cut half next year.
We're required by state statute to provide.
Now we're getting somewhere.
It's all or nothing.
Are we, we're required by state statute.
The statute to provide crossing.
Do you pay for?
For all?
On a private driver.
Whether they're private or not?
I don't know, we're, in the state statute, the police department's required to provide crossing.
When needed though, right?
I don't know, so we, I, I think when Bruce left, they decided that we weren't going to do any of the cross streets, Larry was just going to do the elementary because the elementary, when the parents come in and drop them off and pick them up, there's a line, there's traffic going every which way and the kids are running out and so there was a decision made that Larry would cover the elementary school. But I don't know why we don't, I don't know why we got rid of, I don't know why we got rid of the others.
Well, St. Mary's, I think it was like that four or five students.
Yeah, there wasn't, uh, St. Mary's, there wasn't very many kids that worked crossing.
They got people doing that now from there on.
Yeah, the teachers and the assistants do it now, the assistants and the teachers do it now.
It's not like you're saying it's more traffic control with this crossing guard.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, I mean, the way, the way I see it, and you go out there, it's craziness. Without the videos now, she would correct you into that one.
So, you know, if anything, we need to add the hundred dollars to it.
Now we're, now we're.
Why isn't that, so we can talk with Mr. Hunter?
I don't have what the agreement was.
So, I mean, why don't we talk with Mr. Hunter about that and find out?
Well, we, we need, if we're going to try to get out paying it, we need to find out why we're paying again with, and if we are liable to pay it.
Then there's no way they could out it.
I can't cease to do it.
But it's on statute, I think this something in the statute doesn't make them have to provide.
But to me, a crossing guard is something like at Lincoln, they put a crossing guard to stop traffic.
Does the state statute say that you have to have a crossing guard or you have to direct traffic?
It's a crossing guard.
You have to have a crossing guard.
Well, if they park in, in the parking lot, they have to have a crossing guard to get them across the walk.
That's why I asked how the street goes, those parking lots.
That, that all's private, right?
Then you have to have a designated area to cross people, instead of three different areas like the junior high down there where they just keep walking across three different roads, so.
Yeah, the junior high.
How do you control that? We're talking about thirty-five hundred dollars, and so we say cut the budget, the child gets hurt.
Well, we don't know, we don't know the decision.
I'm not saying cut it, I'm just trying to figure out what it is.
Why we're doing it or what.
Before we move on, I think we should add a hundred dollars, because that's what's going to take to pay it.
Why are we adding a hundred dollars?
Because it's twenty dollars a day.
Well, we have last year covered it, we had a little bit left over, and that was thirty-one fifty.
I don't understand that.
Well, there's times when they're sick and they're not there though, I don't know what happens with them. I got fifteen hundred dollars.
I think that's when we, we talk to the school.
For the rest of the.
Well, we need to find out the information. Yeah, and if we're responsible.
And how many crossing guards do we need? Do we need one for the junior high, do we need one for the elementary?
I won't say anything about it unless we are liable, responsible to have one there.
Hey Stacy, you got home?
I think we have to find out Stacy, that's your job.
I think it came to a point whenever Bruce was transitioned over to them, I want to say it was all, that's when they started paying that position is what I, I don't.
Because I'm like you, Darryl, if somebody.
Who made that decision, I don't know.
If somebody gets hurt right now and there was no crossing guard there, are we liable?
Well, I think it's something that we just leave it right now and Stacy can find out.
Overtime, we talked about it. They don't, but they're happy to take.
There's kids who walk, they walk through. There is an application where they can walk. Well, my guy does have. Is the traffic going to be that, it's a zero otherwise, he doesn't.
She has twenty-seven percent. Normally if you get hit, Stacy's judgment is wrong, you probably get hit at vacation time at hand.
That's.
The first thing will fill up. And then they'll have to start down the next one because they don't want to get.
She's saying that to her son.
Well, so this report is due end of August.
Oh, I thought you were saying.
That was CTO.
CTO.
Five hundred dollars.
So you're back.
Last year, she went through. We actually transferred money in there.
Isn't anybody asking for something?
Forty-two, they went at two thousand, there was twenty-four.
We were ready to go every year. We go for a big one every time.
Let's see.
Money transferred here, so I'm not sure if we got paid back.
What did we get?
That's what, that's what.
They got, they got.
Last year holidays and vacations, I had hours worth of. That's supposed to be six. Ten hour holiday, they are, I remember getting paid time for that, now, that comes off, there will be a straight time, a good time to have.
They still.
They still eat. Oh, we can go back.
Is it already still?
It was his.
Honestly, it's not getting better. I mean, I'm two people short, so if I'm two people short, I'm paying overtime for people to work. For other people to pay off. I mean, it costs me covering shifts when people are taking off, so.
Where's the majority of your overtime going? Is it in a certain department or is it everybody?
It's patrol.
Okay, so you don't have a lot of overtime in investigation?
We have some, but not as much as we.
Not as much as patrol.
There's a lot. I guess it's like a tag team. When I see a country, Harold, you feel like a, a tag team. Of course, we utilized them a lot this year, and that's only to continue, I think.
Hey guys, the more people you see arrested for drugs, the more it's going to cost us. We don't want to set the place down there without.
So we're going to leave that where it is?
I don't think we have a choice.
Just real quick before we move on, so I mean, do we, we have a plan in place for next year on how we try to, I mean, we just, maybe we look at our scheduling. If we don't fill out a position, we're not going to be able to launch a position.
Yeah, there's a way.
Well, I'm just saying, I know what you're getting at.
You don't patrol?
No, I, I think maybe we look at how our patrol schedule, and maybe we have to change some hours or maybe have some different schedules to make the coverage there and the hours we need.
I'm sure Stacy's looked at, Stacy, if not that's working last time, you love to be listing the schedules to see if you can reduce overtime in any way, shape, or form.
I can.
But no, is there any way? You know now working eight hours or ten hours.
I'm going to say right now, no. And the only reason I say that is because we were two people short. If we were full staff, we would have the overlapping coverage where we didn't have to pay somebody overtime.
Okay, now let's go back. Before, when we only had eighteen employees total. Did we work the same amount of overtime? We didn't because we only had one best person or two best people. We just didn't count them.
I know.
So we didn't, we didn't get, oh, we didn't get the coverage to save these persons, right?
What, what was the overtime line item for last year?
Thirty thousand.
Thirty-eight thousand.
No, it was thirty-eight thousand. They lowered it to thirty thousand this year. That's what I'm working on, is thirty thousand. Because it was even above thirty-eight a year to before that, right? Well, I want to say it dropped almost ten thousand when we went through, paid off quite a bit of comp time. Then they dropped it then. I'm not sure. I can look back to see how far, but I think they're probably short now. Probably have a little bit left over for Sandy, don't you think? You mean for this year? Yeah. Not much though, because one, that's a ten.
And, and we, we want to pay overtime if it's needed. Because, because what happens, Jamie, we had a situation here a couple of years ago where somebody's retired. We take most payroll for months.
Oh, okay.
We continue to double the insurance amount. It's expensive and you pay with a higher rate.
I understand, I understand. We've got to look at our scheduling. Obviously, we've got to know what peak times are, peak hours on patrol, and maybe we've got to get a little more creative with our scheduling. But we've got to do something with it. You know, we don't want to spend another forty thousand dollars a year in overtime.
We're working, we're, we're working on thirty thousand.
I love that.
Right, no, I just meant last year was thirty-eight. That's what, that's what.
And Jamie, you'll find out, the more rest you have, the more overtime you have.
Okay, let's move on.
Okay, we got office supplies and we got non-office supplies.
What is the difference?
Non-office supplies. What is that? That's ten thousand. Is that gear or is that?
Stacy, you don't know?
Well, I, I don't know. I, I, I thought we were just doing salaries tonight, so.
That's my thought too.
Because we discussed this in our department head meeting because we just found out today exactly what the number was they were wanting us to cut. Because we had heard two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand. And so finally, we asked the department head, what exactly are we looking at? And then they said, we're just talking salaries tonight. So even though we had sat down and tried to come up with some numbers, we, we really didn't get to that point yet.
It started with salaries and then they said overtime.
Yeah, I did, because we need to look at other things as well. We could get all done one evening. If you want to take the time, Scott and Stacy, everybody else, department heads, and have another meeting, that's okay. If you need to get your, you need to look at your own budget, see what you can reduce.
I mean, as, as you were doing before, going through the others and, and cutting the big stuff out, if you come back to us with a number, we've got to cut it out.
That's right.
And, and, and just like right now, you give us that number, we can sit down and decide what's in the best interest of our departments. Sitting here right now, I can't.
Scott, what we were doing here is what you would know off the top of your head, maybe we can reduce.
Well, we did that last time. You know, what we could cut out of our, off the top of our head, we cut last time. Going through and saying, okay, well, overtime, let's cut ten thousand out of that, let's, let's do this. But now it's starting to get to the point of where it's going to, where it's sharpened pencil and it's beginning to hurt.
And, and the reason we came with this route instead of just the salaries only, because I didn't want to cut the salaries anymore than was necessary. If it has to be cut, we have to. But I thought maybe we could find other areas to cut that we could all live with without hurting too much. So if we want to continue tonight with what we're, the direction we're going in, in the situations and items that we're not sure on, that we need to have department heads take a closer look at, we must come back to it next meeting. But maybe if we, you know, uh.
Some of the stuff we were talking about that we've already cut tonight in this stuff, I'll cut it out if I don't think it requires. The department head was just an all west.
Right.
Buy the vehicles. We don't want to do this or that.
Sure.
I think we've been pretty, pretty much safe for now. The only question, I guess we don't even have to ask her what a non-office supply is. I would just ask you, because I need to know what.
Pretty much anything except like a pencil. Any, any other supply that needs to be purchased, that's a non-office supply.
Yep. How would you differentiate between the office supply and non-office? How much is what they were asking?
Well, right, one dollar is one. One, but all is one?
I mean, gas, oil, tires, those are all non-office supplies. Out of your non-office supply last year, how did you spend?
All of it. Yeah, I was going to say all of it. Yeah, you know, they, almost all of the, well, that, that's what was moved, I think, by resolution to overtime maybe.
I don't know what you mean.
Because everything, everything from office supplies down to executive repairs.
She wrote it with that.
I mean, you're one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight different items. Or zero.
So you think that was moved into overtime? That would make sense.
Well, I mean, I'm going to assume.
Oh, that's fine.
The only thing is money was moved into office supplies that could have gone there.
Non-office supplies.
If she said that she moved it over to overtime, that makes sense.
And I'm, I'm not exactly sure that it was moved over to overtime. This stuff is, would make sense because there was seventeen thousand that's been over time. I'm at the point, I'm at the point now where I'm taking janitorial supplies out of non-office supplies. Because as of August twenty-eleven, I only had three hundred and ten dollars in janitorial supplies.
Well, that would make sense if janitorial supply would be.
Maybe we can, maybe we can use ten thousand to increase whatever else you need. Your other line items are, just take the non-office supply out of there. Maybe we can increase your other line item that you had and take non, to the ten thousand or whatever, and take the non-office supply out of there. Doesn't have to be anybody understanding what this is.
Yeah, the ten thousand. We're moving that ten thousand, right? Well.
No. We're not doing anything. We're just wondering what it was.
To clarify what, where that money's going. You can increase some of your other line items where you know that you're spending it.
I, I did increase.
I don't understand a lot of the line items.
I, I did increase.
I don't understand how he's got them labeled or how he had them labeled.
That's what I'm saying. She's at a loss.
Well, I mean, definitely. The office supplies, I did increase twelve hundred.
What, eight to ten thousand, because it was only eighty-seven fifty?
What they're saying is to have just office supplies and not office supplies and non-office supplies. Just have one, and then moving monies to the office supplies and to the janitorial.
Whatever we need.
Yeah. That's what they're saying. I think the reason why there was two was that high ones.
Well, that's what I'm thinking. I was wondering when the, uh, widening hit the. Here and stuff over there, I wanted to know some of that.
No, that's unfair.
I, I'm trying to operate on, uh, and that's why I'm going to increase the pendulum janitorial. Because all year I'm trying to operate and take the money out of the proper line item that it should be taken out of. And that's why I'm low in some of them because I'm trying to figure out where the money should, what line item the money should be.
The increase that you asked for in the janitorials, is that enough to cover next year? Is that what you asked for extra?
Yeah.
She asked for extra on janitorials, right?
Well, it's twelve hundred and fifty dollars.
No, there is nothing.
There is anything in janitorial.
No, not in janitorial, office supplies.
Well, janitorials, ocean compliance and.
Janitorial, I moved over to building maintenance.
Building maintenance.
She's trying to do that where she's compressing different things into one budget so that it could be.
That's all moved into, um, ma- building maintenance.
And the ocean compliance. So the, once you increase the office supplies, is enough to cover janitorial, right, for next year?
Right. There were several line items moved in the building maintenance.
I'm not saying we believe it. I'm just saying put it somewhere where we actually know where it's going.
Your updated thing here on what you cut for two thousand and eleven, so, or two thousand and twelve so far, sixty-three thousand, six eighty-six. Out of two thousand and eleven, separate.
Bill, it only increased me six hundred dollars. Well, all those line items were in the building maintenance. So you've got the A grab, the janitorial services, the ocean compliance, uh, the other building maintenance, and then there was, uh, fire alarm service. All those together is like six hundred dollars for the year.
Stacy, can you discuss number three eleven?
Three eleven. One drug cost? Two thousand.
You're only thirty percent of that one.
You may not discuss that here.
I can in generalities, I guess.
I'd be fine.
That's, that line item is used for narcotics. We are starting to see, I mean, we are starting to see someone that come back to us that's in small, I mean, like I'll get a twenty-five dollar check for a quarter or whatever. They're ordered to pay restitution, but I've only gotten like three of them. We're trying to give it back, but that's, that's what that's for.
Does it take the majority of that or not? I mean, it's on increase, right?
Yeah, it, I had an, I did increase it this year for coming home. I left it in. But we're talking about, um.
We've got what, seven, three percent left on cell phones. Do you see any need for leaving it at forty-five hundred, if we reduce to one thousand? What's that now? Well, I'm not sure.
That can probably, um, probably go down a thousand dollars. It's at forty-five hundred.
See, we, we've, we've cut cell phones, like you would leave a police department.
It could go down to what? To how much?
Thirty-five, did you say Stacy? A thousand dollars.
Question, we only use twenty-five percent of that in seven, eight months of the year.
Four, seven percent.
So, I mean, we're only going to use another quarter. Why wouldn't we just cut it now?
Well, because we'll be at about a third.
Okay, you're talking for next year. So what about the savings for this year then? Why can't we take half of it out later for the two thousand?
Oh, I think we could. I'd take a thousand off of this year, a thousand off of next year.
I was saying, why don't we take two thousand out of the old blood? Because even if we double, even if we doubled for four months, what we did in the first eight, we're still not going to get half of it. Yeah, but two thirds, so I mean, we're not going to go another eleven, maybe fifteen or sixteen. Yeah, we're still on cell phones. I want, maybe we could take two thousand out of the levels today.
Technically, you've only paid seven months on that.
You only paid seven months, okay.
On any of the bills.
All right, so even if we double it, that's half. So that's twenty-two fifty. If we took two thousand, that leaves us forty-five. So we still got an extra two fifty in there. You tell me if I'm thinking wrong, I'm just.
I'd like fifteen, fifteen.
Okay, I'll do that.
Does that work Stacy?
Pardon me?
Fifteen and fifteen.
We'll take it down to three thousand for this year and next.
I mean, we don't, we're, we're not trying to cut you short, but if it's not enough, you have to speak up.
I can probably deal with three thousand. I average the. Average the bill to two hundred.
Two hundred thirty-nine ninety-seven, it's around two.
Two forty?
Two forty-one.
How many funds is that Stacy? Two more, is that all?
Four funds.
Three thousand is the question.
Four funds and.
I don't think it breaks too much.
Wireless.
Wireless card?
Yes.
One wireless card?
I think there's two. Two wireless cards and four funds.
Were you thinking about the utility bills?
I was, I was. I was trying to cut that. I was, I was, I was trying to, but I couldn't deal with it.
When you told him how much electric bill was, he went over there and flipped it right away.
Well, we'll just pay it on the heat tip.
Something's all broken, something.
Okay, alright, what are we doing?
A lot of hot air. Got it to three thousand on each, for the eleven, after the twelve one. So, that gives us fifteen bucks for each year.
Scott, there's enough hot air up there, you know.
You don't have to even, uh. Well, great, I.
Three thousand. No, well, yeah. It'd be three thousand. I don't know, what color are we lost?
Law was.
I'm just wondering how long I don't know.
I'm trying to keep you in your stuff right now.
How do you make your stop to, uh?
Okay, so out of this year's budget, not including this salary figure, it's seventy-six thousand, eight sixty-one. Then.
Well, no, I don't know.
Take that back, ready to take that?
Well, does that count in that, police officer, like you had him hired yet?
No, hold on, cause that's for this year's, okay, so for two thousand and twelve, that's the same, sixty-five thousand, one ninety-six, and then if I add on the sixty thousand for the officers for this year holding on, seven thousand on the animal control, two thousand and eleven, and then the one thousand hundred, you're a hundred thirty-six thousand, six ninety-six. One hundred thirty-six thousand, six ninety-six.
Thirty-six, six ninety-six. My question, how much? See, we said, uh, the officer, that was short by now, and if we haven't really employed that officer, how much of us? We lost that officer.
I'm saying, we're not saving much, we're making nothing.